A moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Ward one, Ms. Gambles here. Ward two, Mr. Richardson's here. Ward three, Mr. LaFontaine's here. Ward four, Mr. Clark's here. City Clerk Lisa Plantia, the mayor, and city attorney Ronnie Artyx. Under Mayor's comments, number A, motion to amend and finalize the agenda with the addition of items four C on the mayor's comments and item seven N, O, and P on the board business.
I'll move.
Second.
Ward three moves? Ward four moves, ward two seconds. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item B, Mr. Justin Ladner with Cadence Insurance to provide an update on the city's cyber insurance, which is renewing in January of 2025. Justin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Do you have any time?
You can.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time tonight. I really am here to just provide an update on our cyber insurance renewal. Our cyber coverage, current coverage is with Lloyds of London. It renews January seventeenth. We're forty-five days out from expiration, but I wanted to start the dialect now as questions may come up prior to the renewal. On page five is our outline of our quote that I'm going to present before expiration. We are with Lloyds of London. I'm going to ask to make a change. They're a non-admitted carrier, meaning domiciled outside the U.S. They charge taxes and policy fees. I'm asking that we move to Beasley Insurance Company, an admitted carrier. And if I may, just review page five with you at this time. We currently have the option one. Is this, are the same limits I'm presenting and option one are expiring. One million dollar limit is our policy aggregate limit for legal forensic and public relations, crisis management. Notified individual is a hundred thousand dollars. That's very low, just depending on how many people are involved in the breach or that we would have to notify in the event of a breach. That could be costly. But you see, even with an option two, that's going to give us two million dollar policy aggregate limit, that figure does not change. It's still only a hundred thousand dollars for the notification expense. But just following down option one, what does it cover? It's our business interruption is our main drive here. We're after that one million dollar coverage. Dependent business loss really would not apply to our industry here, our municipality here. Cyber extortion, that's where we see most of our claims. That's your ransomware attacks, one million dollar limit included. All of those limits I just mentioned are in addition to the notification limit, a hundred thousand dollars, and the legal and forensic accounting, one million dollars. Data and network liability, one million dollars, and you see it. I won't bore you with what all it covers. The big thing here is we have two options that I'd like us to consider before expiration. Page six, continuing the coverage, the e-crime fraudulent instruction, funds, funds, transfer fraud, two hundred fifty thousand dollar sub-limit. That may be more common in our office here than anything. Telephone fraud. Criminal reward, fifty thousand dollars. That does not change with option two. Breach response, again, this is our deductible, twenty-five hundred dollars. Exclusions on page seven. I'll make sure at the next Alderman meeting, if I may, come back and address and just clarify what some of these exclusions are. Page seven, asbestos pollution and contamination exclusion endorsement, first party loss exclusion, a mandatory endorsement, nuclear exclusion, sanction limitation and exclusion clause, war and cyber war exclusion. But I will, we will go into detail on those, what those exclusions are and how they could affect us in the future. Page eight is really what you want to see is how much more is this going to cost me, Justin? What we're asking to go with Beasley, option one would actually save us three hundred and sixty-two dollars. We're not talking a significant amount of premium. Expiring premium on the bottom there, page eight, three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. That's what you paid this year. If we were to stick with those same limits and move to Beasley, two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. So there is a savings option available. Option two, that two million dollar limit would be an additional, compared to expiring, would be an additional six hundred dollars. Five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. So not a significant amount of premium for more coverage. Did we market the account? Absolutely. Page eleven, we approach ten carriers. We always want to find an admitted company just to avoid those taxes and fees, policy fees. And that's, that's our responses from all ten carriers. Beasley giving us the two options. You'll notice the Lloyds of London quote did come down and meet the premium of Beasley, but once you add taxes and fees, that's no longer competitive compared to Beasley. And there's several other responses. Travelers is a big mortgage for our municipalities. They're actually double, almost, almost double the premium.
What's our premium currently?
Thirty-one.
Correct. Thirty-one forty-two.
Thirty-one forty-two.
So let me ask you this. On this, the exclusions, what exactly is contingent bodily injury with sub-limit endorsement?
Well, in the event of cyber, we had a cyber trigger, a data breach trigger, this policy will not pay bodily injury. It's actually sub-limit it to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Not giving us the full one million dollar limit.
If you don't mind, can you send us in advance at the next meeting, the actual exclusion?
Absolutely.
Language?
Absolutely.
Just a list of needs, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions, comments?
We're not voting on anything.
No, no. All right, Justin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving along. Item number five, Alderman's comments, ward one, Ms. Gambles.
I'm good, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ward two, Mr. Richardson.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Miss, ward three, Ms. LaFontaine.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clark?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Wow, thank you. All right. There's no public comments, so we're moving on to board business, business. Item A, motion to approve the depository docket of claims, paid and unpaid, dated December third, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Some move.
Ward one moves.
Second.
Ward, two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item B, motion to approve the operating utilities docket of claims, paid and unpaid, dated December third, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward three seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item C, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the notice of award with BLT services as lowest and best bid in the amount of one million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for the gravity sewer cleaning CCTV and lining project.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward two moves, ward four seconds. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item D, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the contract with BLD services as lowest and best bid in the amount of one million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for the gravity sewer cleaning CCTV and lining project.
Some move.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward three seconds. Any discussion? All right, let's vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item E, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature of the MDEQ request to modify the MCWI, the opera scope of work to add in the Highway ninety sewer improvements project.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, ward three moves, ward four seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item F, motion to ratify Schindler Elevator Corporation's safety repair order agreement on the lighthouse elevator regarding water damages related to a rain event in September twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Ward two moves.
Second.
Ward one seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. Are they, did they give a description of, of work that is going to be done? Are they moving anything higher than any junction boxes or anything that avoid us from getting water in the system every time?
I don't think they're.
That's going to be my question, too.
I don't think they've given us a firm answer yet on that. They're looking to move whatever they can move when they do the repair. But I don't have a definitive answer on that.
Because, I mean, yes, we need to fix, but how long before it does it again?
I know. Next time we get a tropical storm.
Every time.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Teddy, anything else? All right, let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item G, motion to approve Alderman, Gamble and Richardson to attend the Gulf Coast Legislative Reception in Jackson, Mississippi, January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Cost to the city will be one night lodging at a hundred and nine dollars each, one day per diem, and mileage reimbursement.
I'll move.
Ward three? Ward four seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item H, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the hardware support agreement from BBI for the term January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, at a cost of nine hundred and ten dollars.
I'll move.
Ward four moves. Ward three seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item I, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the software support agreement from BBI for the term one-one, twenty twenty-five through twelve-thirty-one, twen- twenty twenty-five, at a cost of ten thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Nine hundred and ten dollars.
What?
This one.
No, we already did that one.
I was sure.
Ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll move.
Ward one moves.
I'll second.
Ward four seconds. Any discussion?
Didn't we, wasn't there something a while back whenever we was having some discussions that BBI wasn't offering certain things?
Robert?
It's very difficult software to, to use. Very dependent upon human interaction. Transactions, electronic transactions should act as, just flow right into the software without anyone having to do anything. Instead, BBI is extremely hands-on, and it's caused a lot of problems in the past and continues to cause problems today.
But aren't we looking at alternatives?
We've got, we've got an air to three, three possible providers. We would look to have in-person demonstrations in January. Eventually, we'd like to make a selection by the end of spring, actually begin the conversion process and be ready to live for October then.
So this will carry us through there?
Yes, through, through twenty twenty-five. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item J, motion to rename the bank account at Peoples currently titled Fire Department Restricted Funds to Fire Truck Fund.
I'll move. I'll second.
Ward three moves, ward four seconds. Any discussion? Let's vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item K, motion to rename the Fire Purposes Fund to Fire Truck Fund. This is the one oh four fund.
I'll move.
Ward one moves? Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
If this was, if this one's the one oh four, what was the one on J?
They're both one oh four.
They're both going to go into the same one?
Thank you, Count Mule. All right. All right, let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item L, motion to establish a separate HIDTA fund to ensure compliance with grant guidelines.
I'll move.
Ward three moves?
I'll second.
Ward two, one seconds. Any discussion? Let's vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item M, motion to pay twenty-five dollars once per month via docket of claims to planning and zoning commissioners, members.
I'll move.
Ward four moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
Let's go. How come they, are they on there currently?
Well.
How does that, how does that go?
It goes through payroll currently. And this is going to put them through the docket.
Good, okay.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item N, motion to transfer fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, twenty cents from the restricted fund to the general fund due to posting errors of court collections, fines and fees that should have been posted to the general fund in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I'll move.
Ward one moves.
Second.
Ward two seconds. Discussion?
Yeah, can you just explain that? Is it, I mean, if it was from twenty-two, we're going back and reposting it into twenty-two? Or is it being posted into twenty-four?
No, if, if we can't, it's too, it's too late to post the revenue where it needed to be back then. What we're trying to do is get the funds separated and we can identify, you know, when we went through the restricted fund and we identified where the court fines and fees collected by a collection agency were posted to the restricted court fund, and it didn't belong in restricted court fund. It belonged in a general ledger within the other court funds and fees.
Okay.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item O, motion to transfer five thousand and five dollars from the HIDTA bank account to the depository bank account to correct errors.
Some move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item P, motion to approve and authorize signature and submit following documents to the MS Department, Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration required to receive the Senate Bill twenty-four sixty-eight, funding of a million dollars related to the Waverly Kill Cut Off Road Improvements Project. Item A, memorandum of understanding, B, MDFA contract update list, list, and City of Waverly, W nine.
Move.
Second.
Ward two moves, ward one seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Planning and zoning, motion to approve the following short-term rentals submitted by Chris Carter, building official, which meets ordinance requirements of the following properties, one through eleven.
Move.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just one question. Do we have any, what percentage are we at? Does he, are we keeping up those numbers yet?
Yes, we have about twenty-eight.
That is registered, as we would.
And we're at the deadline, aren't we?
Uh, December fifteenth.
Yeah.
Couple weeks.
And you've got how many?
Twenty-eight.
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 So we started a project yesterday to try to move people along. I started it with Megan. So we're sending emails out to people on VRBO and, and Airbnb.
And I think that's one of the things we talked about doing this. I mean, I agree with the process, but getting everybody to do it is what's going to be the hiccup.
Well, it's a pretty hefty fine and a suspension of their ability to rent for a year. So it's in their best interest to come, to come in and register.
Can we put a note on their water bill, on water bill?
We've, we've had it.
You've done that?
We've run it on the water bill. We've posted it on the Facebook page. So we'll see what happens.
How many do you think it is that's not any, any number?
No, I would, I have no idea. Way to guess.
It's a bunch, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There are.
I would say this is less than half.
Easy, yeah.
Way less.
Easily, yeah. Anybody have any questions about any of these properties? They've all met the criteria. They've all been inspected. They all filled out applications. They've all paid their fees. So we're just getting a motion to approve?
Yep, we moved in a second.
Okay, all right. So we already got a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Blighted Properties, number one, notice of hearing for Nicholas Schwartz regarding forty-one seventy-eight Gulf Street, Waverly, Mississippi. Also, one thirty-eight L dash zero dash thirty-three dash three sixty-three dot triple zero is tabled from the Board of, Mayor and Board of Alderman Meeting dated eleven-six-twenty-four. This hearing is determined whether this property is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Chris?
I have four photographs taken this afternoon about three o'clock. Shows the condition of the property. There's not been, there's not been really any change other than removing the RVs that were out there. I think that had been done by the time of the last meeting when this was presented. So there's really no appreciable change in the property at, at this point.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion. I'll second.
So ward four made the motion, ward three second. The motion to adjudicate the property located at forty-one seventy-eight Gulf Street, Waverly, Mississippi. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Item two, notice of hearing for Hadel Properties, LP, regarding two oh nine Highway ninety, Waverly, Mississippi. Also, one thirty-seven M dash two dash thirty-five dash zero one nine dot triple zero is tabled from the Board, Mayor and Board of Alderman Meeting on eleven-six and eleven-twenty-twenty-four. This hearing is determined whether this property is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Move.
Any progress on this? Well, let's do a motion. Go ahead, Bobby. Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward four, second. Go ahead, discussion. Any progress here?
No, I talked to the owner a few weeks ago. He said he was going to get back with me and I hadn't heard anything. I've tried to reach out to him a couple times and he got no response back as recently as this afternoon.
This property's been sitting like this for nineteen years. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
We've tabled this a couple times, right?
Yep. He did at the last meeting to give him an opportunity to get in touch with Chris.
I think we gave him time last time to, to show some improvements and.
From eleven.
At least we were, we were looking to at least get a game plan together on doing something, but I can't get any response from the owner.
Okay, the motion is to.
Now, let me ask this.
Go ahead.
What's the, what's the solution to it? Because this is, this is a pretty big building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
A lot of issues.
Well, I mean, we have other blighted properties that we can go in and clean up, but this is a pretty, pretty large task here.
We're talking about steel structure on the inside, too, so.
Yeah. It is. This one, this one's right there on the highway. So in, in the effort that we're, it's underway to kind of try and clean up the highway, refocus Highway ninety stuff.
I mean, we don't disagree with it needs to be cleaned up, but I'm trying to figure out what is, what is our game plan? I mean, we can't just go adjudicate and we have no plan of what we're gonna, a plan of how we're gonna fix it.
I think at this point, I reached back out to the owner, let him know that the adjudication's been made and give him two more weeks, two months to, to do something. In that timeframe, we'll come up with, with our game plan. I don't want to go over there and just tear the building down right now without getting back a hold of this guy.
No, because there's probably actual structure that is probably, you know, like I said, I think a lot of it's on the front, probably the roof. But I, I just, I want us to have a plan before we just adjudicate and go out for bid to just go out and do whatever. I mean, we need to.
Yeah, we can't do a complete demo.
Yeah.
At this point.
So we move forward with the adjudication?
You move forward with the adjudication. We'll give the guy notice that we can do up to a complete demo, but we need to. Hopefully he'll.
And that's not a service that we're just going to provide for free.
That's right. It would be at the cost of whatever corrective action we take would be a lien on the property in the event it's.
Right.
Ever sold or.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is to adjudicate the property located at two oh nine Highway ninety, Waverly. No further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Chris. Consent agenda, item eight, motion to approve the following consent agenda items as numbered A through E.
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries on the consent agenda.
The only thing I got on there is that on E seven, wasn't that also on the docket?
Yes, it is. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't include that. I will add that change. Thank you.
All right, can we vote? We'll, a chain. Your vote? Everybody voted?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right, pass is four to zero. All right, as motion to enter a closed session for personnel matter. Do I have a motion?
No big motion.
I'll second it.
Ward two moves, ward three seconds. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Okay, a motion carries. Item ten, motion to enter executive, executive session for a discussion related to a personnel matter.
Move.
Second.
Ward two moves, ward three seconds. Let's go ahead and vote, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
All right, motion carries four to zero. Alright, motion carries four zero.
I mean, we have to have a little bit of people out there. Why? What's the issue? I didn't know if you had a feeling. It's hard. She was saying it's hard. Yes. I mean. My first job.
Yeah.
I don't know. He was very young. A lot of them too. We need some more. You know. You know. So come on this way. Come on, let's go to Canada. And I'm thinking of working for Canada. But it's always been a good idea. Or. You wanna go to the way that I would go to. So we need to come up. I'm just. See ya. And I'm ready to catch it. So. You. Watch sports. And there. No. I'm pretty afraid it's hard. Because I believe once you have like, uh, you know, you should have second life, you know, you have a second life. Single, yeah, but you have information. And it's true for you. And it will bring you lots of money. And I hope you're still prepared for it. I'm very excited. That's what I'm saying. He's not gonna sue. He's a good, uh, what we say. And she was my teacher. She was like, let's go, let's go. I said, if he didn't eat, I'm here. You can't, you can't get in there, it's locked in. So I think. You know, so it's a topic. I hope myself, you can't, you can't get in, I can't get in. So there's no way, and then I'm looking at the forehead and it wouldn't understand what the stomach will talk about. But the stomach's in there. He, he would have liked it, he would have enjoyed it, he'd ate some of that, he'd gone. So he drank a lot. It killed that. But that was something that was something cool. So you, do you think this works? So am I thinking it's fine? No cure. Work, so work. Tell me what they were. Okay. That's it, right? Yeah. She was a little bit, he's, he's one of those. Very well. He says. I should rest in peace, I saw a piece of that, it's on his stomach today, but why? She told me. Nobody can really eat so much, right? It could be. I don't know. But I think here, because they all, they, 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 they know they're forced, they would kill them, they know they feel, they're not. No, it's not, just take it. But I'm looking for the egg. They left on Saturday, he was fine, except they were quarrelled. She thought there was somebody working. Only come with it, they went. And the next one, he was fine. He's already eaten something. Does he though? Well, they did. She said they did. Well, then you see, it was. Apparently, yes, yes. They can see the same. She said generally, right. So I felt bad. A new beginning was something I can say. They didn't see the, she said, generally, right, because I felt bad, I didn't, I knew he didn't, it was not, I didn't say, well, it's trash, I was just saying, that's just stuff on a, what's- I told her, I said, don't, she's- Did they want to- How's his dad? Did he get into something, or was that, did he, did he, did he have some, that is, I don't know, what the, it's- Should he do it? He always said, from the same thing last- Still. Still lucky, right? I know.
I know, I agree now.
Personally, it's- It's a big shame.
You mean, like, the same hand, the, the, the motion?
That keeps you a little bit before. That has to go, I mean, I guess, the head one, trying not to throw you out, we've got to get a lot of skills.
I know, but how many things are you reading? I'm reading some, I didn't read them last night.
Sixteen, I think. The round, you know, it's, it's, I thought it would be the night.
Uh, two, tomorrow.
Think I got a little transplant.
Yes.
It's good.
Yes, it's the eighth day, it's the day after my anniversary.
I could give a celebration, anniversary and stuff. You're not worried, you're- I'm getting like, the twelve fifty one.
They're coming, are you?
There's a place, there's a place I drew, I mean, it's, I was over there.
I guess she'd be sure.
Can't say that it's something every day.
So that means you got, you got these people to be on your side, right?
And nobody wants that. It's weird.
That's a compliment to you.
Yeah, thank you, Bobby, compliment to Bobby.
Alright, I have a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken.
Me, I'll move.
Ward one moves.
Second.
Ward four seconds, alright, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
Second.
Ward one's, seconds, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Need to adjourn.